We're in the house.
Well, good evening. Good evening, everyone. We'll have Councilman Peterson come back and join us. And we'll be ready to start our meeting. If our clerk treasurer is ready.
I'm ready.
You're ready to go?
Everything's ready to go this evening.
You're on the street. Sorry. I don't know. It's been fine. Good. With that, I'd like to go ahead and call the town of Munster, Town Council Regular Meeting to order for August fifth, twenty twenty four. And this is here at the main meeting room, the Town Hall. And with that, I will ask the clerk treasurer to call the role.
Councillor Schinkin.
Here.
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
And Councillor Nellens.
Present. All right, with that, I would like everyone to please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to call our Chief of Police, Steve Shekel, to the podiums.
Yes. Good evening. Tonight, it's my honor to present a special award to one of our sergeants, Sergeant Jack DeLu. On July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, around nine P M. Munster Police Department Sergeant Jack DeLu was on patrol when he observed a young man sitting on ledge of Cayman Avenue over eighty-nine-four expressway, preparing to jump. Sergeant DeLu made contact with the man and was able to develop a report, resulting in Sergeant DeLu being able to convince the man off the bridge. The man was transported to a local hospital for treatment. The man reported to officers on the scene that Sergeant DeLu was the first person that cared about him in a long time. The Munster Police Department is extremely proud of Sergeant DeLu and wishes the best for the young man who was also involved. In light of Sergeant DeLu's actions on this night, his squad recommended him for a meritorious service award. Meritorious Service Award may be awarded, excuse me, may be awarded to any sworn member of the police department who by way of their actions exemplifies the conduct, expectations, and traditions of the law enforcement profession as set forth by department policy and who fulfills the duties and responsibilities of their position in a manner which reflects the highest degree of honor, integrity, and commitment to the community and to the department. By order of the Chief of Police, Sergeant Jack DeLu has hereby presented the Munster Police Department's Meritorious Service Award this fifth day of August, twenty twenty four.
Well, thank you very much, Sergeant DeLu. You really serve Munster proud, and we're very proud to have you, one of our officers. Again, thank you very much. It takes us up to the public comment. All public comment is limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allotted for the public comment section. All speakers must sign, the public speaker's sign-in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, council may allow public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but is not required to do so. All rules for public comments are posted outside of the main meeting. So with that, I'd like to open up the public comment. If, I believe at this point, the signup sheet goes out, so there may be some folks already signed in. You please line up to like that.
I'll start now.
Whenever you're ready, Mike.
Oh, I'm ready.
All right.
Okay, Mike, do what the eighteen thirty-three to the plane. Just a quick question. When are they going to start doing something on Chestnut Lane? They did a great job tearing it up, but nothing else has been happening to it. Is it going to, anything going to happen this year or is it going to wait till next year? That's my question. And I'm done.
Well, certainly, Mike, it's going to get finished this year. I don't have a start date, but. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Greg Stavicevich. I live at ninety-five oh one Cottonwood Drive. And I've been here before talking about the speeding going through my neighborhood. Azalea, Camelia. There's many other streets that you're having this problem with. I'm just going to tell you something that I seen a couple of days ago. On Azalea, you put in raised locks, what you call them, right? Not Azalea, Franlin. No, Azalea.
Azalea.
All right. I seen a Jeep. Guy pulls up, I'm walking my dog. He pulls up. I see him stop. He backs up. He goes flying over that thing. He goes down. He doesn't even stop. He goes flying over the next two. The reason I'm saying that, you have to understand, you're not going to stop these people from speed unless you stop them. And that's what you need to do. You know Camellia is bad. You worked on Azalea. Okay. I just told you the story about the raised locks. The other things that you put out there, what do you call them? That you had to tear out?
Should be.
The canes. The canes. Why did you tear them out? It's a valid question, right? Why'd you tear them out? You put them in, why'd you tear them out?
They were impairing the residence in order to park in front of their house or get in and out of their driveways. They were ill-conceived. Item.
Okay. Was anybody, did they ask any of the residents there before you put them in?
Yes, we, no, afterwards.
Okay.
I can't speak before.
That's all right. I'm not trying to make everybody look bad. It's just the situation is bad. That cost us a lot of money. And all I'm saying, use some of that money to put some stop signs at least on Camellia and get it done before somebody gets killed. And it'll be a kid more than life.
Well, we don't want that. But thank you very much.
Right.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Mike Angler, one thirteen Beverly Place in Munster. On behalf of myself and some of our committee that are also here, we just wanted to come and provide an update as to where we are in the last couple of weeks since we were here. I think, as I mentioned last time, we collected all the surveys that the town put out, returned those, I think, rather, like fifty. I think we had fifty, around, right around fifty returns. We've done the coalition, put together the information, summarized it, got it ready to go back. I sent letters into the, into the town. We had her back to last Friday. On Friday evening, about seven forty-five, I give the gentleman credit, Mr. Chris from Public Works, he did call back at seven, at seven forty-five, so if any of his bosses were here, he was working late that night and called me and said he was sorry he didn't get back to me. He had reviewed what we, the surveys and said he was kind of in agreement. We needed to do something and we wanted to make this more of a presentable, something that we'd be proud of, all of us from Munster. And so he told me that he will be meeting with the landscape architect this week, Wednesday or Thursday. And after the results of that meeting, when they get together at if he brought this up, he wants to get back together with our committee. So there's a willingness there to work, to work with us. We're hoping that comes through. I'll follow up with him for sure, make sure that it happens. But we're hoping that'll be the week after next, so. In any case, that's just our update for this week. And again, thank you for your time and thanks for your support and helping us get this done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Angler.
Good evening. My name is Michael Bassino. Munster resident, born and raised. Even included some visits at the Hopper residence growing up. Good evening, good evening.
Your address?
Eighty-one zero eight Oakwood Avenue. Thank you, Wendy. Um, I serve as a volunteer leader for our beautification committee, for the, for the Love of Munster Beautification Committee. And just as a quick summary, you know, we are a group dedicated to, a nonpartisan group dedicated to protecting Munster values, beautification, and improving quality of life. Specifically, I, I co-chair our litter cleanup events. And that's why I'm here. I want to tell you what we've done four months in a row and invite you to the next event. Once a month, we hold events for beautification. It amounts to picking up trash around town. We've done it on four occasions. Proudly, each occasion, we've removed ten to fifteen bags of trash around town. And you're invited to the next one, so. Bring your appreciation of Munster and your, your good energy and join us on August twenty-fourth. It's Saturday, nine to twelve. We're going to be meeting at White Oak Park, and you come when you can and, and leave when you need to. And to learn more, we have a Facebook page, For the Love of Munster, and you're welcome to email us as well with questions or comments, and it is fortheloveofmunster@gmail.com. And thank you for everybody's service, and we won't stop beautifying our town and protecting our values. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, and we'll even let you wear one of the cool branded vests that I co-chair Dave Dorber made.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to come forward for the, open to the public session?
I didn't sign. May I have one more comment? Yes, you.
Never have one. Michael Gafford, one zero three eight zero Oxford Place. I know the ship has sailed, but I just wanted to go and voice my that I don't agree with the, the funds that you're taking from the TIF. I, I think that's money that we need to develop the city. It's not sustainable for what you're using it for, anyway, that, you know, you're going to be able to do it again and again and again. And I think just because you can do something that they recently changed our law doesn't mean you should.
Thank you. Thank you.
Evening. I'm Jurich, eighteen thirty-nine Magnolia. The first comment made me want to come up and add a little something. Chestnut is a mess. Traffic now, I, I emailed the police several times about traffic going down Crestwood, avoiding Chestnut. We've had exit patrols, but people are going forty-five, fifty miles an hour in probably double and triple the traffic. There, there really is going to be some problems. They need to get that done as quickly as possible and, and need to address the bluebirds traffic there even under normal circumstances. Since the pandemic, that's had a lot more traffic in terms of people utilizing the park, and only bad things are going to happen with the way traffic goes down the street at Crestwood. Secondly, with, with the police and, and God bless you for talking the guy off that ledge. That was wonderful. The Black Heart Saturday with police and volunteers and fire trucks out there. What a great, what a great service you guys did. My grandkids loved it. Other kids, other adults who were there loved it. Keep that work up. It really helps improve the town. People are just so impressed to see them. And finally, I have one question. Did anybody last Thursday drive on Ridge Road?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else that would like to come forward in the open to the public session? Anyone else who'd like to come forward in the open to the public session?
First thing for the ninety-one twenty-eight White Oak.
If you could please sign the, the list there. We don't, we don't start the timer until you're all ready.
All I wanted to be with you. Our beliefs are our belief. They deserve to make a decent wage. They, they deserve a decent income. You guys, they, they carry a weapon. Why do they carry a weapon? Because they have to. They have to because there's criminals out there that are, they'll probably kill them. Every day, I mean, every day I see the need for a police officer has gotten shot and killed. It's horrible, our society. I'm sorry, but that's where our society is now. And you have to pay them. They, they have families. They, they can't afford to, you know, they have to support their families. You know, I know people, you know, in the setting that, that, that you have to take money from one country to another, but I don't care. They deserve to be get paid at their salary.
Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close the open to the public session. Then that takes us up to.
I'd like to report on the electronic public comments, the emails that we received. We've, in the last three weeks, we've received ninety-seven electronic public comments. Fifty of them were in opposition to Ridge Road. One was in support of the town of Art and the CBPA. There were seventeen in support of Ridge Road. There were four that were questioning the relationship between Nersy and Ridge Road. There was one that recommended no parking on Franlin, which is safer for bikes. There were thirty-three that were no involvement in the CBPA. Clearly, there's no order to these. There was one complimenting Councilman Peterson and his positive E S G involvement at the Fairmount Building. There was one traffic calming around Chestnut, and I can remember what was said earlier, in favor of traffic calming around Chestnut. There was one that said, now that we've closed Terrace at the state line, how about closing the city line north of Ridge Road? There was one that was in response to the personal attack during public comments three weeks ago, and it clarified the role between, the relationship between Nersy and the projects that are done in Munster. There was one saying that Bluebird Park and the mulch looks very good. And one suggestion that Manor should be made one way, perhaps going south, and Homan made one way going north, which will alleviate some of the traffic issues there. On tonight's agenda, there's some talk about repairing, road repairs on Manor, and perhaps that should be expanded to Beverly as well between Homan and Manor from the Nick D traffic. And one email was in support of keeping Manor closed at Terrace. And that is my report on the electronic comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the last three weeks.
That takes us up to the consent agenda. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have support. A second. Emotionally, we have a second. Any questions, comments?
Again, I just want to make sure that the sidewalk place program assistant request for waiver, there was a memo, there was a typo in that memo originally. Was that changed for tonight's meeting?
Yes, it was updated.
Okay, thank you. I just, I'm looking at Friday's copy, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Saying none, we'll ask our clerk treasurer to please call the role.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to old business, and there is no old business. So that takes us up to new business.
So the first item is Resolution twenty-one thirty-seven. This is naming a plan sponsor with Mission Square. Mission Square is a company that we use that provides a deferred compensation program for the employees. We need to have someone named by resolution that can sign and handle the day-to-day activity that goes along with that. So the resolution is drafted, naming the interim, the controller on the interim town manager as that.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion on a roll call vote to adopt Resolution twenty-one thirty-six to name Controller, interim town manager Patricia Abbott, the plan sponsor for the town run to Mission Square, four fifty-seven deferred compensation, an I R A plan.
I second that. We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions? Comments? Saying none, please call the role.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Next is ordinance nineteen sixty, additional appropriations. This is to previously council approved purchasing new vehicles for the police department as well as using some of those funds for payroll expenses. And while they approve those paid, those purchases, bills are coming in pretty soon, and we need to have the authority to spend the money. The cash is there, we just don't have the permission to do it. So this would be first read to allow that expenditure. You'd be asked to hear this on its first reading, next meeting, asked to have a public hearing, and then adoption.
Do we have support?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to hear the proposed ordinance nineteen sixty for additional appropriations on a first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading for August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments?
My question is, we did approve the police vehicles for two million dollars and the additional pay salaries.
Yes.
We have not yet approved or even discussed the additional appropriations of five hundred thousand dollars on the second line. Is that, is that common practice that we approve an appropriation before we make the ordinance to change salary ordinance?
This is not in response to the proposed salary ordinance. This was, this was put together prior to the salary ordinance. So the TIF fund is being asked, is asking for two and a half million dollars in additional appropriations. Two million of that to pay for the vehicles and the equipment that's been ordered. The other five hundred thousand was estimated for use for those payroll expenditures expected between now and the end of the year.
Okay, so, so two and a half million dollars is for the vehicles?
Two million, this is where it gets confusing. Two million is for the vehicles. That will be paid directly out of the TIF fund.
Okay.
The payroll expenses are paid from the general fund. So we have to transfer half a million from the TIF fund, which is why it needs those appropriations. That will get transferred into the general fund. And then the general fund needs permission to spend it for the actual payroll expenditures.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So while this is really showing three million dollars, this is really still only a two-point-five million dollar
total cash out.
Okay, my apologies. Thank you very much for the clarification.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Saying none, would you please call the role?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance nineteen sixty-one is amendment number three to the salary ordinance. As was discussed in agenda review, the police department is reviewing different ways that they can organize themselves and to they're, they're trying to look forward to what we see coming down the road with the town and the needs that might be, that we're facing. And as a result, they're asking to increase the number of officers. So they want to increase the number of authorized first-class officers from thirty-two to thirty-five. They want to increase the number of authorized sergeants from nine to eleven, and they want to create the position of deputy chief. So this is a total of six new officers, but they're it, it's allowing for certain promotions and then backfilling. The other item that is included in this proposed ordinance is to make a ministerial amendment. There are components in three of the resolutions related to the interim town manager position that really need to be included in the salary ordinance as well. So this is just asking to include those also. But there's nothing different in terms of what's going to happen with the interim town manager. It just means a, another steel vote.
Chairman, do you? Yes, do we have support? I make a motion to reconsider ordinance nineteen sixty-one on first reading and schedule second reading for the next reading.
And I'll second that. All right, we have motion. We have support, questions, comments?
Yeah, I think this is great. I, we have a bunch of residents out there that have concerns about speeding on their streets. I think there's six additional officers. Chief wants to use it as a patrol unit to patrol those streets where we don't have to take other men out of, you know, working the beat and just working on the two train stations, working Centennial Park with what's going over there and traffic control. I think the addition will be a positive for the residents of Munster.
Chairman, I, I, I fully echo Councilman Schinkin said, this is, this is a positive step to continue our focus on public safety here in Munster, and I fully support this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I, I really am proud of the, the focus that this town has provided for the police department. Right now, we're close to seven million dollars to spend each year on the police department. Our total property tax revenue that we receive in that fund is about eight point seven million. So eight, eighty percent of our tax dollars right now goes to funding the police department. That's up in, from two thousand twenty, when it was four point eight million dollars. So there's seven million dollars right now that goes to our public, uh, police department. I'm concerned with the additional one point two million dollars that this ordinance is going to affect because six hundred thousand dollars, about a hundred thousand dollars per police officer, and another six hundred thousand dollars for cars. Right now, public safety is also fire department. Currently, our fire department has a budget of about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So roughly, we spend seven million dollars a year on police department, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on our fire department. I think it's important that we look at the total picture of public safety when we look at this type of ordinance. One point two million dollars is in addition to the current two point five million dollars that we just passed in additional appropriations for. Now, I know we have twenty million, twenty-five million dollars in our TIF fund. But when you start taking chunks out at But when you start taking chunks out at three point seven million, four million dollars a year, that TIF fund can go down pretty quick. And that TIF fund is, is in charge, is for infrastructure improvements to the town. And we also hear a lot about streets needing to be repaid, that streets need being redone. And I just am concerned that we look at uh, a very important part is the police department. But at the same time, public safety and how much we're really focusing in on um, solely the police department, not looking at the other public safety aspects of town. I, I am concerned when we look at other towns, and, and I know we only looked at one town when we looked at the salary study. Uh, that town and our town, if we pass these, we will have twice as many, almost as, almost twice as many police officers than other town. And I think that's an important factor that we have to look at. That we have a staff of forty-four police officers. Our neighboring towns are less than that by ten to fifteen officers. If we look at neighboring towns that are similar size in what we do. Um, so I, again, I, I'm, I'm concerned from the standpoint that this money, while it is there in the TIF fund, that we really take a strong look at this. Um, I understand the, the need for patrol and traffic. Um, but I also, you know, at one point two million dollars, um, we can do a lot of different types of traffic control. You know, the, the speed humps that are going in are twenty-four hundred dollars a piece. If I figured that out right, we're talking about four hundred and fifty speed humps throughout town. And I, I do not want to see four hundred and fifty speed humps in town.
Neither.
But again, part of this is, we look at, at, at a stop sign and police presence at a stop sign, yes, that is a very important part of, and it will deter traffic. But a police officer can only be at a stop sign for so long. And I, I think it's, it's a, it's a concerning thing when we just group this type of additional expense into um, into traffic sa- safety, especially when uh, we most recently heard from our town engineer that talked about how um, you know, stop signs and things aren't the optimal way or even the industry standard to reduce speed. Um, I think we have to be concerned, and I think it'd be wise to really look at this expenditure and look how things are being done. I also think if we're looking at this type of additional staffing, we should be looking at ways that we could possibly reduce staff, staff now, staff costs from the police department. Will this six additional officers reduce um, less overtime? Will it help us with vacation buyout, the, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars we spend each year with vacation buyouts? Um, does this take, you know, reduce the need for traffic quotas that we heard earlier this year from an officer that, that was instituted? Uh, again, workman's comp, di- different things I think we need to look at. If we're going to bring this amount of people on, is there a way that we can create a metrics that we can really improve the work environment that, that now the police department?
Counselor Gardner, I just would like to make a correction that we are not on a traffic quota. Despite what was said by that officer, we are on a public community contact quota. They're asking to, to make contact with residents and be seen and talk with them and get involved.
And I stand corrected, but yeah, I did, I did hear a public comment from an officer about that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, so at the agenda meeting, uh, Chief Shekko for twenty minutes and explaining why we need these six additional officers and what's coming into town and what's coming over the borders from Illinois and even north from Hammond, and how one officer confiscated seventy-six guns in one year. And we don't need this in our street. If Munster's about public safety, we need to be proactive, we're, we can't be reactive anymore. I think this is good cause. I support this.
President, I want to weigh in here. There's been a number of comments about the affordability of this increase in officers. And yes, we are taking advantage of the change in Indiana law to use our TIF fund. By understanding that the fund is presently funded, Savage, please weigh in here, twenty-eight million is what we have in that account right now?
It's around twenty-six million.
Twenty-six million. I further see, and I've had conversations with the staff, that we are looking at increases in the TIF fund, a, a revenue increase uh, of, of, of future revenue of anywhere from two to four million dollars a year. Is that my recollection?
I can't say that I remember off the top of my head how much, but yes, it is projected to continue for the life of the TIF.
And we're looking at a period of at least ten years, possibly more?
About ten years, and at that point, it would have to be reestablished, and then it goes back down to zero. We have to start over.
So um, my colleague, Mr. Schinkin, has a degree in business from the Kenny Business School at NIU, correct? I have an MBA with a focus of finance from the University of Notre Dame. And when you do net present value calculations of this, we have more than enough money to cover these expenditures going forward. As Mr. Schinkin pointed out, we have a pressing need for these officers right now. Now is when we need it, not somewhere in the future. We can afford it. We have looked at this, we have considered this in detail, and council is comfortable that this is an affordable expenditure over the long term. So these concerns about the increase, yes, we heard them. And as, as we have done in the past, we have considered them, we've studied them, and we are comfortable that this is an affordable increase in our police presence, and it is a needed increase. And I fully support this, and I would be happy to vote yes, and we take a vote on this ordinance.
I'd like to make a comment. Uh, you know, I, I learned a lot uh, in the, in the agenda review work study that Chief Shekko was, was speaking on. Um, you know, and one of the concerns we think about are the two train stations that are going to be opening next year. And I found out that uh, they have eight police officers on the line. And everything off the line is, is responsible to the town. So who knows what kind of stuff can happen with trains coming through, right? And we need to be, you know, I've heard this once before up here, it's like Munster doesn't want to be bare minimum. We want to be better. And, and so this, this um, move we're making, I think, is, is putting us in more of a responsive position rather than a reactive position. Because we don't want to be like running around trying to figure out how we get better, you know, uh, some candidates in to become police for our town. We want to be relevant and, and able to go. So I think it's a, it's a great uh, situation.
To make a, a comment, I'd just like to say that the vehicle purchase, yes, was very large. Would have liked to have spread that over a number of years, but we need to bring it up to the current times. And we're not anticipating that type of purchase again. There'll be more on a as to need basis and should be a lot less vehicles, their life expectancy should be a lot longer. So I believe we've really looked at the cost and expense, and yes, we will be looking at the fire area. There are, we have that salary survey being conducted right now for all the departments. And we have a lot to, a lot to look at and a lot to digest, but I do personally believe that we need to make these adjustments in the police department and make sure that they're adequately staffed and, as was commented, adequately paid and adequately compensated with respect to the take-home vehicle. And that has made a difference in the number of candidates that we've now seen in this last round of looking for officers made a very large difference, and I hope it continues. So with that, I-
Well, I got, I have another comment. Um, about twenty years ago in this town, nobody thought the school town could have financial difficulties. However, due to overpaying top staff, new, new administrative positions, and most importantly, a change in state law, the school town fondly chose hiring a superintendent just a couple of years ago, just to fire people, so they could meet budget. I'm concerned that, there's always talk about property tax revenue being reduced from the state that by us making these commitments at this time, and if the state law changes, there is a real possibility that we will become so top-heavy and so heavy in one department. And again, I understand the need for police departments. I understand, we have forty-four police officers on staff now. Look over uh, next door, there, you know, we have about fourteen more officers than they do. You know, fourteen officers more than the, you know, town surplus. So we do have more officers, and our pay, uh, if you look at that, our, our total pay uh, before we put the salary ordinance in, the top thirty-five employees in the town of Munster were police officers out of the fifty. Top thirty-five out of fifty were police officers. Next year, when, when that report comes out, the police officers will be, I would say that eighty, eighty-five percent of them will be in the top parts of our town. And I, I'm just as concerned that we have high-quality people in our other departments and that we don't shortchange our other departments um, when it comes to water, street, public works, everything, you know, parks, whatever, because I think that those other departments also add to improving the quality of life in the town of Munster. And so a- again, I, I am concerned that we're in, we're becoming too top-heavy when we have eighty percent of our tax revenue that goes strictly to the police department, you know, and, and that has, has risen over the years. Now, we, we were at four point eight million dollars back in two thousand twenty, it's seven million dollars now. Again, the, the police department hasn't fully funded, and again, it's important that we do that, but I also think it's important that we look at the long, long-term financial implications of, of what's, of what this approving is, and I don't want us to turn into what happened with the school town of Munster eight, ten years ago.
Counselor Gardner, where'd you get your information about the other towns having fourteen less and Dyer having fourteen less and that we only used the one town for a salary review?
Well, I'd ask Mr. Nellens, how many people did we do for the salary review? They had us, no, Mr. Mr. Nellens, how many, how many people did this, did the town council review when we did the salaries su- study?
At this point, uh, Counselor Gardner, I cannot answer that question. But I would like to make a comment with respect, the school town of Munster really is not relevant. I understand what you're saying, but there is a lot more to that, and I don't want to get into it here, nor do I know all the information. But it is, it is, there is more to that story.
The president, Nellens, I call the question.
I second that.
Are you willing to yield?
No.
So, all right, then, would you please call the vote on?
No.
Move the question. We can, that's-
Okay.
You call, you call him, push. The motion, so Mr. Schinkin moved to call the question, it was seconded by Mr. Peterson. So the vote is on whether to end discuss.
Yes.
So, and then we, yeah, so to end, end discussion.
Then we call the vote.
I'll make a note, just a second. Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
No.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Now the vote on ordinance nineteen sixty-one. Counselor.
First read.
First reading of ordinance nineteen sixty-one. Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
No.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Mr. President, I, I did observe, it appears that uh, give full benefit to my colleague, Mr. Gardner. Appears that he was reading off what, what appears to be an email, and I would invite him to put his email into the record. Uh, it'd be interesting to see who the author of that email is as well.
Um, I think that as a comment, and I would-
Mr. Nellens, I will show Mr. Peterson who wrote the email to the other person. It's Chuck Gardner written, Chuck Gardner. I can't believe I have to justify how I get information by a fellow councilor. Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Um, that takes us on to our next item D.
This is the All-City Management Services renewal for the crossing guards. This is the company that the county has worked with for many years. Uh, and they presented their new proposal for the coming school year. The R B rate is increasing, and we're estimating there'll be about a fifteen thousand dollar additional cost from the previous school year.
And this is uh, the town pays for the cross-
The town pays for the cross.
Which they have done for quite a number of years, forever.
I'd, I'd like the motion to authorize interim town manager Patricia Abbott to sign accordingly, accordingly on behalf of the town of Munster in the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five contract with All-City Management Services.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further comments? Saying none, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
The next item is uh, police vehicle equipment purchases. At the beginning of the year, when council approved the purchase of the vehicles, they approved a general dollar amount. They, they had said they would also approve equipping that. Now, it's time to approve actual equipment purchases. And so what's presented uh, right now that is currently being forwarded are for the AEDs, motorola for all, the radios, axon which provides the um, the dashcans, uh, Baycom which is computers, um, and then the Chicago Communications, which is, I believe, another radio thing. I think I'm getting that one wrong.
That's also the lights, emergency lights.
Lights, and, thank you. Um, there will be, right now, we're asking for permission for these purchases. There will be other purchases that will come forward. They just haven't, we haven't reached that point yet.
Do we have support for this?
I make a motion that we approve illicit e- equipment purchases to outfit the new take-home vehicles for a total of eight hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-eight and seventy-one cents.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second.
How is this falling line with the proposed budget for these items?
They are still within budget.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd just like to make a comment that today's police squads are a far cry from Andy and Mayberry in terms of what they use to offer right now. Kind of want a little bit of humor tonight, but the squads didn't have all that. They had maybe one big red light on top and a siren, and that was about it. Uh, we do outfit the police squad with a lot of technology now. Uh, on that computer, they can find out pretty much anything about the vehicle and who's supposed to be the driver and when they get the license, they can find out a lot about that person that they didn't have before. So I just want to comment that we're, we're moving in the right direction here with respect to technology. Munster wants to keep up with it as much as possible so that we can provide the best service through our police department. Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Next is an engagement letter for fixed assets. This is with a company known as Peterson Consulting Services. Um, to be clear, this is not connected to Counselor Peterson. Uh, this is a company we've worked with for many years. Uh, we collated a bunch of information, we handed on to them, and they get it in a format that we need for appropriate governmental accounting, uh, if they were asking for permission to enter and agree with them again.
Counselor President, I want to make a motion to confirm the letter of engagement with Peterson Consulting Services at the amount not to exceed four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any uh, questions, comments?
Mr. President, I do want to confirm, uh, Peterson spelled the wrong way, S-O-N.
There's no relation, and we've had a long-term relationship with this Jonathan Peterson. He goes by John.
Just wanted to clarify that. Right way to spell Peterson is C-T-R-S-E-N. So just pointing that out for everyone that's interested.
No connection.
No connection.
No connection whatsoever.
All right, involve the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor, the other Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes, please, yes.
Once a year, we're gonna have to hear that for an engagement.
Next is an engagement letter with Baker Tilly, Baker Tilly to review our solid waste collection fees. Uh, we have a, we have a number of things that are supposed to be represented in that fee. We have additional costs that we know are coming related to the landfill, and we want to be sure that we have an accurate rate that's being charged for both, for that collection.
They have support for this motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the engagement letter dated July ninth, two thousand twenty-four from Baker Tilly for a solid waste management fee analysis at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I'll say.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further questions, comments? Saying none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper. Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Next is the methane generator maintenance plan. Earlier this year, council approved the purchase of a new methane to electricity. Uh, generator that will be put down at the landfill. Uh, this is a maintenance plan to go along with it. We're asking that you approve it now so we can get this year's prices. We will not start paying for it until we actually receive the new generator next year.
We have support for this?
Yeah, Mister President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Clark Energy Proposal dated six seventeen, twenty twenty-four for the planned maintenance proposal. Of the gas to energy generator.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion, we have a support, any questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Next is confirming a change order for the twenty twenty-four paving and water main improvements. Uh, there was a. Eight inch insertion valve that was supposed to be going into the water main at Camelia and Southwood. Um, when they went to actually do the work, they found that they could not do that type of a valve because of. Uh, the pressure that was in the water main at the time, they had to do something different, uh, which resulted in. The need for a change order, and it needed to be dealt with right then. The main was open, they had to fix it. So it has already been signed, this work has already been done, so we're asking for confirmation at this point.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to confirm the change order number two to Reith Riley for the twenty twenty-four paving and water main improvements. Eleven thousand seventy-two one dollars, printing the contract total of five million two hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have support. Any questions, comments?
I guess the question I would have is, is not so much with the change order, but with the timing of this project. Have the staff have a timeframe of when. Projects with arose within the, uh, C C M G twenty twenty-four dash two project are completed?
So this particular project is not a C C M G project, just to be clear, but this project, they are on schedule to be done before school opens. So that, because I know this is all right by the.
Right, right.
Um, I I I think there might be, there's the possibility that there is some of the more, um, finishing work. Uh, that might not get done till later in the year, uh, but the roadwork should be done.
And again, I would like, I shout out to really the contracting staff for working so diligently on this, because projects, especially underground, who knows what you find out? Uh, and I know that it is a time sensitive deadline, so I do appreciate that. Chris in the back, thank you for all your hard work. Um, with this, and and again, it's it's appreciating, it's nice to hear that we are looking for a quick. Completion for some of these projects. However, we can't guarantee those because of underground work and things like that.
Plus to acknowledge the the patience of the residents, because I get a lot of white calls and concerns about, when's it gonna be done? I'm losing business, I gotta go this way, and I. They got lost, so, you know, stay calm, and it's it's gonna get done, and it's gonna get done well. Thanks, Joe.
All righty, any other comments? Thank you very much for the comments, uh. Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Next is a change order for C C M G twenty-four-two engineering. Uh, the last meeting council approved the engineering work to be done for this. When we went to do the application for the grant. Um, we realized that we were leaving some grant money on the table, and so we wanted to maximize. What we can accomplish, so we added another road to that project, and as a result, it's gonna cost a little bit more in engineering costs. So that's what this change of order is for.
Counsel President, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, uh, Wright Riley proposal dated August first, twenty twenty-four, at a amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand two hundred thirty-one.
I second that.
I think we're on the next item. The change order for C C M G twenty twenty-four design and engineering. Oh, I thought we did that.
Am I on the wrong page? Am I on the wrong page here?
We're on item J.
You're on the correct item. How much J?
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
If I could make, I'll make a motion and by voice vote to approve the additional fees as outlined in the July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four proposal from S E H. Bringing the total authorized for C C M G twenty twenty-four dash two engineering services to one hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred dollars.
I second that. Good catch.
Great catch. Well, we do have a lot on the agenda tonight, little, little things to keep. Cleaned up here, so. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further questions, comments? Again, this is just. We had some more money available, and we needed to do some engineering to be able to spend that money, so. With that.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Takes us up to Manor Avenue.
So, with the train going in, uh, Nick D's contractor, Passion, had a lot of heavy equipment on Manor Avenue. Quite some time, they're not done with that. Having that there, they're going to be repaving the road, uh, to Gregory, and staff is asking that we be allowed to. Go all the way to the northern terminals of the road from Gregory. That's what this is for. They're out there, they're gonna. Hopefully start the work tomorrow, and, uh, and and so we're able to get the same prices that I think Passion has for.
Okay, I'll make this motion since I made it earlier.
Yeah.
On the second or previous motion to approve the Wright Riley proposal dated August first. Twenty twenty-four at a amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty cents.
I second that.
I think this was the email we received from this one gentleman.
Yes, I think this is what he, I think this is what he was reading, that they had a question.
Okay.
One step further to beautifying Munster.
Well, it's quite frankly, it's up, it makes good sense if they're already there, they're already localized. If we can extend their, uh, project all the way up to the top. Brand off the whole road and pave it down, and then we're done.
I, I do think the, the email was a little bit more to the point that there's other streets over there. That are low on our pay ratings, and can we get those other ones done also? So, I, I, I'm, I'm glad we're doing this. I think the email is a little bit more in detail that there's others, those other short streets that are going east west, I think were some of the things that he was mentioning.
And the short streets are down at Crewe.
No, right. It says this one, but.
Beverly, was that the one he was talking about specifically, was Beverly?
The only thing I would, I would mention with this is. And and again, I mentioned the last meeting also. With the road, with the train state, the train coming closer to completion. I think it's more important now than ever that we have staff people involved with this, because there was a number of things that Nick D did promise the town. I E landscaping and other things that if we don't get on top of things now. Um, I'm afraid that the train's gonna open up, and we're gonna be sitting here with. Promises that we don't have paper trails for, so I, I, I do think it's important that we, we get in touch with the. The folks that we used to have, you know, continuous meetings with, regular meetings, and make sure that we get, because, you know, part of the community states. Was not gonna be, um, uh, fencing at all, but it was gonna be, uh, land, uh, landscaping and burns and things like that. And I just want to make sure that we give ourselves enough time to work with Nick D, and we have a station veterans. Plan, I don't know where we stand with, you know, the veterans, but that was close to six million dollars that we wanted Nick D to do. In addition to make the, the train station better, to meet our zoning codes, meet our planning codes. And stuff like that, and I just think we're at the spot where we need to follow up, make sure we get that, because I think. Nick D throughout this process has been really pretty good to work with. I just think we need to make sure we have communication with him.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counsel Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Uh, next is the gas pedestal system, um, this is the unit that is used to track. What vehicle is being fueled down at the garage, uh, as well as other details, what's the unit, what's the employee, what's. What fund that, that kind of information. Uh, staff has gone out and. Looked for another one, they looked at several different kinds. This is the one that they are requesting to be purchased, is the one that they think meets the needs. There's some other. Fancier ones, but it's beyond what they feel they need. So they're looking for approval to purchase this right now.
Do we have support for purchasing this unit?
Counsel President, I'd like to make a motion to purchase the new Dover A X seven gas pump pedestal system. That costs not to exceed ten thousand nine hundred eighty dollars.
Do we have support?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
When will this be installed? I, I, I do not. Thank you.
Thirty to sixty days.
Okay.
All right, uh, seeing no other comments, questions, please, uh. Call the roll, and if you're ready.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counsel Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Next is some work at the Riverbend and Catymet Avenue pump stations, uh, pumps that are there are from nineteen ninety-four. Um, we need two of them, need complete unit replacements. One of them will be able to be rebuilt and then used as a spare down the road. Uh, there's another pump at Catymet Avenue that is currently not working and needs to be repaired. Um, and then there's a re- a reservoir fill valve control panel at Riverbend that needs to be replaced as well. The total cost of the work is a hundred and three thousand three hundred and two dollars, and it'll be paid for out of the water by anticipation.
Mister President, I'd make a motion, uh, to approve quotations from Metropolitan Pump Company totaling a hundred and three thousand three hundred two dollars. For a new rotating unit replacement at pump number one and pump number three. At the Riverbend Pump Stations, repairs to pump number three at the Catymet Avenue Pump Station. And new reservoir fill valve control panel at the River Pump Bend Pump Station.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counsel Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Next is advanced metering infrastructure, um, known as A M I. This, we. Put data collectors on some of our water towers. Those data collectors would then be able to read the water meters instead of us sending, uh, water maintenance people out once a month. To drive up and down all the streets of town to collect those meter readings. It will also allow water billing staff to detect if there's something unusually high usage in a given home. We could call that resident and say, hey, we think there's something going down there. Uh, to help offset water leaks, but also send the waste of the water as well. We're asking for approval to purchase the data collectors and get them out that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're very excited.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of A M I data collectors as described in the utility supply company quotas. Dated February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Any further questions, comments? I was gonna make a comment, if I'm not mistaken, we used to have to have an employee go around to each and every house.
We had two employees that walked.
They did that.
They walked the town, they literally walked every single home, every single month.
And they had to go inside, because we didn't even have the remote readers.
Uh, yes. That, that's been about twenty years now since they had to actually go inside. Uh, but then they went to handheld units where they could plug it in, and handheld units, but they had to walk up, and now they've been tried, so that. The next generation.
There you go.
Until we still have one of those employees.
We do still have one of those employees in our department, yes, when we got rid of the. Walking the route, he came into our department.
He does a fine job, happy to have him.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any further comments, questions? All right.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Yeah, moving this along, Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
All right.
Riverbend tank maintenance, so they're running it. There was, um, a, uh, inspection by audit, by I D M earlier this year. Uh, and we, there were some deficiencies found at that, at the Riverbend tank that need to be addressed. Uh, a solution has been found, right now technical specifications have to be written up, uh, so that the bids can go out to get this work done. All right, so this is to write those technical specifications and to do that engineering work, and then I expect in another meeting or two, they'll be. You'll be asked to approve the actual work being done.
Counsel President, I want to make a motion to approve S C H proposal dated June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four for engineering services on the Riverbend Tank Maintenance Project. At a cost not to exceed twenty-two thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars.
Do we have support?
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further questions, comments? I'm just gonna say, I, the town really does keep up on the infrastructure much as we can. Uh, particularly the freshwater supply. Coming into town, and I make sure that's all good, and, uh, that it passes all the inspections. So, with that, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counsel Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to reports, are there any reports?
I do have a report.
Okay.
Um, last week, I was in Indianapolis for the A Medical Trust Board and Member Meetings. And, um, I wanted to share that, um, they provide a town with our medical insurance. And the A Medical Trust is in a strong financial position. They provide medical insurance to sixty-four municipalities throughout the state, and five more are currently being reviewed by underwriting. That's four thousand seven hundred and ten, you know, individuals being covered. The, um, our plan for the twenty twenty-five season is an increase, a potential increase in our insurance premium. Of about three percent, which is significantly lower than, that what we're seeing is a projected industry standard. Of well over ten to fifteen percent, so we're in good shape there, and, um, the, like I said, the trust is in great position, so.
All right.
I want to share that.
Well, thank you.
Any other reports?
I would just make a, uh, that our next Munster Civic Foundation, which all the council members are part of, it gets, uh, Monday, or. Monday, August nineteenth at six P M, that'll be held here at the town hall.
And then I want to welcome everybody tomorrow, National Night Out, I think we have, uh. Boy, over a hundred and twenty-five booths participating this year, forty-five, pardon, maybe one forty-five.
Yes.
It's sold out, we're gonna have booths there and clouds and everything, and at least somebody say hi. I'll be working the lions.
All right, any portfolio reports at this time? Announcements, all town council meetings will begin at seven P M, unless otherwise noted. The, uh, August nineteenth will be the regular town council meeting and regular redevelopment commission. I'll be looking for an adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, then we do have a short meeting to follow with the redevelopment commission.
Who seconded that?
I did. You doing all my, good to see you guys.
All right, uh, with that, I'd like to call the redevelopment commission regular meeting to order for August fifth. Check, 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 roll.
Commissioner Schinkin.
Here.
Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
President.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Nellens.
Here.
Our liaison to the school town of Munster. John Casser.
Here I am.
Nice to see you, John.
Nice to see you as well.
No, I, I was gonna, the last time you had a special presentation at the school board meeting. Recognizing Coach, was it LeVar Marshes?
Yes. Yeah, so we had changed our dates and.
We missed you, but it was a nice recognizing Coach Marsh.
All right, with that, I'd like, we do have a open to the public comment here on the redevelopment commission. It has the same program as the main meeting, two minutes per person with a total of. It has the same program as the main meeting, two minutes per person with a total of twenty minutes for this section. We do have the uh, regulations posted outside. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the redevelopment commission? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the redevelopment commission? One more time, anyone that would like to come forward to the redevelopment commission and speak in the open to the public? Seeing none, close that, that takes us up to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellings.
Yes. We have no old business, no new business. Any reports, announcements? Call for adjournment?
I'll make that. Motion.
We have a support?
Seconded.
Chuck?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? He is close.
Very good. See you tomorrow. Counselor Nellings to sign?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, everyone, for uh, coming tonight, letting through all the media.
Good, John.
How are you doing?
How much you think?
Yeah. And it actually, for us, I kind of said last time.
Especially when you get a school tape like that every year.
Yeah, exactly.
So, it's a lot, and you're losing time, so you know, you know for sure you're gonna have to one break.
Yeah.
So, I think that's kind of, you know, I think I think for granted, I'm a hustler, I'm a hustler.
Chris, just thank you very much. Thank you.
Looking for your support, your vote.
I appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you.